Hi, everyone. How's everyone going, doing?
Good.
We're having a bit of a technical difficulty, so I was told to come and do the dog and pony show. So, um, and if I could take the time to introduce you casually, um, we will have the newest planning commissioner joining us tonight. And I see that Commissioner Madden, you're already in the room. If you want to turn on your video and say hi to everyone. There we go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi. Welcome.
Thank you. Good to meet you all this way.
Yeah, good to meet you too, Jared.
Thank you.
And congratulations to you Pamela.
Oh, thank you. As many has also sent my condolences to you Pamela. We'll see how that goes. Now, this is a, it's an exciting opportunity for me, but I mean, Darcy left a big shoe for me to fill, so I'll try to do my best.
You've already, you've already filled that.
Thank you.
I've seen it too many times. I don't know that Dorothy can go haul the cattle to you.
So, let's see. Oh, Mark is on too. Hi, Mark. And Chair is on.
What are you doing?
We're having a bit of technical difficulty. You were thinking that eight months into Zoom, we got this figured out, but not quite.
Oh, there's always a technical difficulty with Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, there's always that. But we have one, two, three, four, five. You have five members. Madam Chair, um, make it count again. One, two, three, four, five. Yeah, so we're waiting for two more. And Commissioner Harmon just joined us. Oh. Hi, Commissioner Harmon. So, let me go check on staff to see if we're ready to proceed. I will be right back.
Hi, everyone.
Nice to see you, Kelly.
Nice to see you too. Always from the comfort of our corners that don't look quite so bad.
Well, that's good to have a screen up.
Very stylish.
Chair Lethan, this is Madeline. We're live. Chair, I think we're good to go.
Okay. All right, well, um, good evening and welcome to the San Bruno Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. Thank you for everyone, to everyone for attending tonight's virtual meeting. And thank you again to San Bruno City staff for all the help in making this happen. To our fellow members of the public, please know that we want to hear from you. If you are in the audience and you'd like to address the commission during public comment or during a public hearing for an item that's on the agenda, please use the raise your hand button in your Zoom tools. And when it's your turn to speak, we'll call your name, we'll unmute you, and you'll be given three minutes to share. Uh, if you're joining by telephone, it's similar. You may also address the commission by pressing star nine. And we will address you and unmute you, and also you'll have three minutes to share. Tonight, I have a couple of quick notes for my fellow commissioners and for the public. Firstly, we have a newly appointed planning commissioner, uh, joining us for the first time tonight. Uh, I join with everybody in welcoming you, Gerard Madden, to the planning commission. I think you're going to find a great wealth of knowledge here, and we are all eager to work with you, and we are happy to have you here. If you'd like to, you're welcome to say a quick hello and introduce yourself.
Sure. Uh, yeah, thank you for the, for the welcome. I appreciate it. Um, uh, very excited to be on the commission and looking forward to working with everybody here and helping the city out as best I can. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, and welcome again. We're happy to have you. And then a point on logistics, again, for clarity during the remote meeting, we are going to be doing roll call votes for every agenda item tonight, so just be prepared to motion second and vote. And then, um, uh, oh, another thing is that there has been some debate about whether we ought to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in our remote meetings. And I know it's a little tricky, um, but initially we had not done it because, um, it can lead to some awkward angles on our cameras. So, however, I know, City Council has managed to do a very good job of standing if they choose for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, what I'll do is I'll invite anybody who feels they're able to stand in a respectful and, uh, normal-looking fashion to stand if they like. And, uh, and, uh, staff will be displaying a flag, so that should work out nicely if you, if you please. That is it for housekeeping. Um, I think we're ready for roll call. Pamela, are you able to do roll call?
I'll be doing. Madeline will do it for you.
Oh, Madeline, okay.
Chair Lethan.
Here.
Vice Chair Biassoti. Commissioner Hamilton. Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan. And Commissioner Madden.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, getting a quick note. Um, I guess we'll go ahead and we'll try out our Pledge of Allegiance and see how it goes, and I'll just continue to lead for simplicity. How's that sound?
Great.
Okay. All right, so go ahead and stand if you like. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I'm, um, I think the host is, has, has closed my video.
I think I jumped the gun on the pledge before the flag appeared. I apologize for that. Or there was a delay of some sort.
It showed up.
Okay. We're doing the best we can.
It's a little awkward, I must say, to stand up and feel like you're, off your body is showing.
I know, I know. And I, I think that I just wanted to invite everybody to do what feels right and respectful to them and leave it open to that. So, do that, what we, what you will. Okay, we'll go ahead and move along to business items. And the first item is the approval of minutes from August 18th, 2020.
I make a move to approve the minutes of 20.
Before we approve, I have a question about the minutes. Um, the, the minutes don't seem to have much detail anymore. It really just kind of, it seems to be a rehash of the agenda without any, the, I mean, I'm not looking for a full transcript, but it used to have at least what was discussed and who said what and all that. And is that, is that a, is that a new city policy that we're following?
Commissioner, um, Hamilton, vice chair, if I may, we have, um, discussed this in the past last year. We're trying to mirror the state council's model. We're only providing the action minutes. Reason being that all of the meetings are recorded on YouTube, and now they're recorded on Zoom. So previously, we are providing a lot more information in minutes so that if in case our staff has to go back to look for information, we can't. Given that, you know, we're a little short-staffed, and this is not really the best use of everyone's time, we decided to mirror, um, city council's action of doing the action minutes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the explanation. Thanks a lot. I'm good.
All right, thank you. So I think we have a motion on the table from Commissioner Morgan, uh, to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a couple of seconds. Um, I think we will have to do a roll call vote.
Chair Lethan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassoti.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
And Commissioner Madden.
Aye.
All right. It sounds as though the motion has passed, and we have approved our minutes, and we will move into public comment. And this is an opportunity, it comes at the beginning of the meeting and it comes again at the end of the meeting, for members of the public to speak about topics that are not on the agenda. Madeline, uh, so if there's anybody from the public who'd like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand in your Zoom tools. And, uh, Madeline will take a look for you and let us know if there's anyone raising their hand.
We have two hands raised.
Okay.
Paul, I'm going to bring you into the room.
Can you hear me?
Hello, Paul? Can you, yes.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening. Ready to go ahead and start with, uh, what you'd like to share, Paul?
Okay, I, I just got a quick, well, maybe it's not a quick question, but I have a question. It doesn't make sense to me why we issue conditional use permits. It seems like every single one of them gets approved. So in order to save a lot of time and effort, why don't we just go and change the code? That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. You know, what I'd like to do is, um, perhaps staff, because they're most familiar with our policy and practices. I'm wondering if you can, uh, share why we do have, uh, why we do work in this sense.
If I may, Chair Lethan, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I first of all, wanted to indicate that it's generally not staff's practice or policy to respond to questions by members of the public during public comment.
Okay.
And so however, having said that, there's a short answer to the gentleman's question, which is that conditional use permits are authorized to be issued by the planning commission by state law. And so it's one of the land use approvals that the planning commission is authorized to provide. But as I said, it's not our policy to respond to questions, nor should there be a discussion about the topic because it's not on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, City Attorney Zepfren. I appreciate that. I, it's difficult to, for me to strike the balance between accepting things and, uh, making folks feel heard and understood. Perhaps in a situation like this, I could direct him to, uh, to somebody else to discuss at a later time?
Absolutely. You know, one of the, one of the problems with, um, the setup of public comment, and of course with Zoom meetings, is it is difficult for people to get a sense that they're interacting with their appointed or elected representatives. There's no question about that. However, unfortunately, the Brown Act does limit what commissioners and staff can say and talk about in response to public comment. So yes, absolutely. What we encourage is that the chair could refer the gentleman to staff for an additional explanation, pick up the phone and call somebody, and we'd be happy to, to talk with him.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, that guidance.
Madam Chair, I'm more than happy to talk to the gentleman. Just feel free to come and talk to me.
Okay, and you can be found on the website?
Yes.
Okay, Pamela Wu. Uh, Paul, connect with Pamela Wu, and I think she will be a great resource for you. Then we'll go on to our second comment.
Yes, Gloria. Gloria, um, I'll be allowing you into the room to talk. Gloria, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm not quite sure if this is the right place to ask, but, um, I'm a neighbor, and I think there's something on the agenda tonight regarding, um, a property at 1236 Canes Avenue.
Yes.
And is this the right place, or do I just wait? I don't have the agenda.
Oh, sorry, you have come to the right meeting. Um, but if you want to comment on that item, wait until the item comes before the commission, and there'll be an opportunity for you to share, um, during the public hearing.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, we'll look for you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Are no more hands, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. And so we will leave public comment and move on to announcements of conflict of interest, and I'm aware tonight that we have a few. Um, are there any commissioners who need to recuse themselves? Uh, Commissioner Morgan?
Through the chair, I have to recuse myself from, uh, the item for, what is it? Um, Bay Hill, because of the distance.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else that needs to recuse themselves? Yes, Commissioner Harmon?
Yes, I am recused on the Bay Hill conversation as well, although that is for reasons of financial entanglement.
Okay, thank you. And I also will need to recuse myself from items, uh, 4A and 4B, the Canes project and the Cypress project, just because of, um, because my home is too close. So I'll be recusing myself from that. And, um, Vice Chair Biassoti has generously offered to, uh, run the meeting in my absence for those two items, and then I will come back in and I will resume chair for that, the remainder of the meeting. Okay. Nobody else?
And before you continue, Chair Lethan, I just wanted to indicate, since we're on Zoom, and I don't usually come to planning commission meetings, it's wonderful to be here and see all of you, especially for, um, the important items that are on tonight. Generally, for, um, non-council meetings and also for council meetings, my practice has been to mute my video and audio while others are making presentations, mainly so you don't have to look at me and neither you members of the public, uh, during the presentation. But I'll be here, I'll be listening, and, uh, happy to chime in or answer any questions that, that might be asked. So I just wanted to let you know that if you see the video muted, it's not because I've disappeared.
Okay, we enjoy seeing your smiling face, but we will know.
You bet.
Okay. So, uh, with those announcements, we'll move into the new business. And, uh, this is where I will hand off to Commissioner Biassoti, Vice Chair Biassoti, to take over 4A and B. I believe that staff is going to move, remove me from panel, and I will be on standby until you're ready for me again.
We are removing you from the panel now, Chair.
Bye.
All right, good evening, everybody. This is item 4A, 1236 Canes Avenue. It's a request for conditional use permit to construct a 953 square foot residential addition that would enlarge an existing house more than 50% floor area.
My, there's a beeping in my.
I hear it as well.
Okay. Um, can we get a staff report, please?
Yes, uh, thank you.
Hello, Michael.
Vice Chair Biassoti, uh, Michael Smith, Planning Department Staff. You have before you the project for 1236 Canes Avenue. This is a request for a conditional use permit to construct a 953 square foot residential addition that would enlarge the existing house by more than 50% of the floor area. Uh, if approved and constructed, the house would be 2,382 square feet with two off-street parking spaces. The subject property is located on Canes Avenue in the Mills Park neighborhood between Cypress Avenue and Olive Court. The lot measures 5,100 square feet in area and is currently approved with an existing single-family home with a one-car garage that was constructed in 1947. Uh, this home has three bedrooms and one bathroom, a family room and a dining room, and 1,429 square feet of gross floor area, which includes the one-car garage. Uh, as I stated earlier, the applicant is proposing to construct a 358 square foot addition at the first floor at the rear of the home, and a new 595 square foot second-floor addition. Uh, the ground-floor addition would measure 12 feet in depth, and the second-floor addition would be set back from the front of the building. The first-floor addition would add a new family room and enlarge the existing kitchen. The second-floor addition would add two bedrooms and a bathroom and a playroom area. If approved and constructed, the house would have 2,127 square feet of living area with three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms, and a 255 square foot one-car garage with a second tandem parking space located in the driveway. Uh, the project is eligible for a sequoia exemption per section 15301E. Meeting notices were mailed to property owners within 300, uh, foot radius of the subject property, and no public comment was received. Uh, the, the project requires a use permit because the addition would enlarge the building's floor area by more than 50%. This use permit requirement allows the planning commission to more closely evaluate the compatibility of larger additions to smaller homes through application of the residential design guidelines. So a little bit about the neighborhood. The neighborhood was originally defined by modest, single-story, post-war homes. But over the years, many owners have constructed additions to their homes, including vertical additions. As a result of these additions, the neighborhood is now characterized by one- and two-story homes. The proposed building would be consistent with the prevailing neighborhood character and scale. Furthermore, the vertical addition would increase the height of the building by only seven feet and 10 inches, and would be located towards the rear of the building. The proposed building would be finished in stucco with an asphalt shingle roof, which are the predominant materials that are also found in the neighborhood. The roof of the addition would be sloped into the existing roof in an architecturally practical way, with a small front dormer being the only visible indication of the new second floor from the street. The proposed building would comply with the lot coverage, floor area, height, and setback requirements of the code. Since the, um, since the Architectural Review Committee reviewed this building, there has been a slight modification to the project that you have before you. And that is that a porch was added at the front entry. So that, that's a new addition to the project. This was shared verbally with the Architectural Review Committee, um, at its, uh, meeting in, um, September, and they agreed to let, let, um, let that be presented to the full planning commission. So a little bit about the parking. As you're aware, the city adopted a revised parking standard, which became effective at the end of March of this year. Uh, the new parking ordinance allows the driveway to be counted as a second parking space if it measures 18 feet in depth, measured from the back edge of the sidewalk. The existing driveway complies with this requirement. Therefore, the project complies with the two-car parking requirement. In addition, the property has a paved side yard where an additional car can be parked. The general appearance of the addition would match and be harmonious with the architectural character of the existing building and the overall neighborhood character and scale. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the use permit based on findings one through six in the staff report and conditions of approval one through 32 attached to the staff report. Uh, this concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, any questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Harmon?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. There was a term, uh, in the packet, an anchor easement. Am I correct in understanding that is referring to the anchors for the power lines that run parallel behind the property?
Yes, that is correct. Uh, the, the anchor easement is just for, uh, they're like the guy wires for the power pole. It is actually not on the property, but behind the property.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yeah, through the chair. Um, I noticed that the chimney shown on the original building disappeared. And I'm wondering, uh, what happens to the exhaust? What, the fireplace is still in the living room?
Um, I'll, I'll look into that. I'm gonna look at the plans myself and see if the chimney, the fireplace is still in the, in the floor plan. And if it is, we can let the applicant answer that question.
Maybe just convert it to electric fire or something like that, but I just noticed the chimney disappeared, but the fire surround is still shown there.
Yeah.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson?
I didn't, I don't, I served on the, on the architectural review, and I don't recall this piece, but on A5, uh, just the front elevation, I see that the one window, not the living room window, but, uh, has shutters, and the others do not. I wanted to at least bring it up, and I don't know if it's a question for the applicant or, or just something that maybe I just didn't notice on the, on the original architectural plans.
Okay.
Sorry, are you talking about the existing window?
It's this proposed.
Oh, it's proposed.
It's this on the proposed front elevation, A5.
Okay, and this is the ground-floor window?
Yes.
Okay.
And so none of the windows except the one, the one on the left side. And I apologize. And as I said, I'm not opposed to it. I just wanted to.
I don't like you. Guess what? I don't particularly like you either. One damn thing to like about you right now.
I think, uh, Mr. Wapensky is still in the room.
Oh, that was interesting.
Yeah, that was interesting.
And then with your comments, Mary. Michael, did you have any answers towards that or comment towards the shutters?
Yeah, sure, I can, I can try to answer that. So the existing elevation, uh, just has the shutters around that one window on the ground floor. And I, and I think that's just how the house was designed. Uh, that's the most prominent, most forward-facing window on, on the house, and I think that, uh, just in the original house design, they just put the shutter detail on that window.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Actually, looking, Mary, looking at the existing house picture of it, it has the shutters on the house currently, so that's an existing shutters. Yeah, subject property, image that says subject property shows shutters on that one.
Correct.
Yeah.
Being that it was being redone, I didn't know if that's something that they had considered shifting.
Okay. All right. Were there any other questions? Okay, at this point, we'll go ahead and open up public comment, and we'll bring in the applicant or architect. Are they with us, Michael?
Yes, he's, he's being led into the room. In fact, he's here now.
Thank you.
Kenner Barra?
Hello, good evening. Hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, Michael, thank you for the staff report, and, uh, welcome to Gerard, uh, for your, uh, for your maiden, maiden voyage in planning commission. How many years? You've got a lot of experience around you. Anyway, um, where do I start? Let me just first say that, um, one, the shutter, since it's the last comment, uh, I hate shutters. Uh, and I just wish, I just, this is the one room we didn't remodel, and I just wish I could put a, you know, a double window or, you know, a larger window there, but, uh, that window is centered on the elevation, and it is not centered on the room, so, shutters, uh, are, are probably the, uh, the, you know, the best, the best choice for now. I am proposing landscaping that will, uh, hopefully eat up that, uh, that, uh, front elevation a little better. I do also want to mention that. I do also want to mention that, uh, this house, this was a unique project because, uh, in my experience, I've been asked to expand homes, uh, along with expanding the home and also expanding bedrooms. Uh, this is a three-bedroom, one-bath, and it has turned into a three-bedroom, uh, two-and-a-half-bath, uh, with a large family room and a, uh, and a large gourmet kitchen. Uh, they converted the existing kitchen into the lau- laundry and storage. And so, uh, it was, uh, unique. Uh, they put their two children upstairs, uh, and, uh, wanted it at the rear of the property, so, uh, the roofline fit that way. And then, just prior to the architectural review meeting, uh, the homeowners asked if we could expand the porch, which was a blessing, and I believe the porch, uh, you know, downplays that large roof area and, uh, you know, accentuates, uh, the front of the house. Uh, Commissioner Val, uh, thank you for catching my faux pas. The, I checked my notes, uh, the homeowner does rem- want to remove the fireplace. So, uh, the chimney's gone, but, uh, I have not removed it from, you know, from the plan, so, uh, it, it will all be gone, uh, internally also. I just wanted to also add, uh, this house, uh, and, and, and we've run into this, uh, somewhat in, in Mills Park, uh, these houses, uh, this, this lot is less than a hundred feet deep, but it, it was located, uh, further back of the property, and has a large front yard, almost, you know, over twenty-five feet of, uh, no, actually thirty feet of frontage from the sidewalk to the front of the garage, and the fact that we have double-wide paving. We'll be redoing all the front paving and all the landscaping. Uh, so in essence, we, we have more like, uh, you know, the potential of three to four cars off-street. So, it's, uh, uh, and, and not yet a parking problem on the street yet, so... Anyway, uh, that's all I have. Uh, I want to thank, uh, thanks staff for the report, and, uh, welcome. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you, Ken. Um, any questions for Ken? Anyone? Hello? There we go.
For me.
Thank you, thank you for your report. Uh, any questions for the architect? No? All right, I guess, I don't, I can, oh, all I see is the drawing. I don't have anybody's face. Is there anyone who wants?
I think Commissioner Morgan is speaking, but I don't, because it's on mute.
Commissioner Morgan, do you have a comment or question?
Oh, there we go. Um, yeah, I just commented that, uh, I like the layout. It seems to be a much better, uh, more usable layout for the house. I think it's a big improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, on my screen, all I've got is the diagram of the, the floor plan.
Sorry, through, through the chair, um, I, I just put that up just in case there was a discussion and you guys had further questions.
It's okay, Alan, it's okay.
Okay, no, I just can't see other people's faces, so...
Okay, I'll take that down.
Thank you. Okay, back to the meeting. Um, is there anyone in the public who would like to comment? Do we have anyone out there in the public?
We do have one hand raised. Um, Gloria, I'm gonna allow you to go into the room.
Hi there, again.
Hi, Gloria.
Can you hear me? Hi. Um, is it possible to see the front view of the house, please?
Yeah, sure.
Current front view or the proposed?
The proposed.
Okay. That's on page A-five, Michael.
So, I live on the east side on the corner of this house.
Okay.
There it is, right there. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, so, my questions are, um, how many windows are on the east side of the addition upstairs? Does it sit right here? That's west, that's facing west. I, I need the east, there it is, right there. Okay, so it looks like there's one window... Is that, that's gonna be a new window, yeah?
There's one new window, one new window at the second floor in the stair hall.
Okay, in the stair hall. Um, I'm just thinking about privacy in my yard. Um, 'cause that's gonna be looking down, probably, I, I'm thinking probably at the end of my house. I can't see where that occurs in the lot size. That window.
I just like say, it's in the stair hall, it'll, it'll be difficult to look down into the yard because, uh, it's, it's in a, it, it's in a tall space, so the people...
Okay.
Will not be standing in front of the window looking out. Nope.
Okay, perfect, okay.
It's at the, it's at the landing and the stairway, if I'm reading the, the drawing.
Right. The bottom, bottom is actually a landing, yeah.
Okay, and then, is there, um, something that takes into account, like my sunlight in my backyard?
Uh, staff, have an answer for that?
Or the architect, probably, right? I don't know. I mean, is that something that they have to account for so that it's not blocking my sun in my backyard?
I mean, I, I don't know what... I mean, through, through the chair. I, I don't exactly know what the impacts would be on her yard. Um, it, it's not something we're required to evaluate, but, um, I can try to go to the site plan here, and so, uh...
Is this all new right here, on the right side?
Yeah, so you, so it doesn't show...
So, that's all gonna be clear, right?
I can say, for that, for that section, for that section of the roof, it is no more than four feet taller than the existing roof is now.
Right, that's the first section of the house, but then what about the taller section?
So, there's fourteen, there's fourteen feet of setback before you get to the full two-story.
Okay. Yeah, it's still, um, you know, it's my west view. So, I'm a little bit concerned that it's gonna block that whole back view.
Okay. Um, view is not something we can typically look at, because in San Bruno, we don't have a view ordinance, per se. Um, sunlight and things like that we can consider, but view's not something typically we can, uh, address.
Well, it's, um, so it's where the sun goes down at the end of the day, so it's sunlight is, you know, it's my sky, right? It's the sunlight, so that's kind of what I'm concerned about, is the sunlight.
If, if I could, if I could explain, I, I'm, I'm, I won't say that it doesn't cast an additional, uh, a larger shadow than, than currently, but because it is setback, uh, more, more than, more than what's, uh, what's allowed, uh, it will cast a, a, a minimal shadow onto the west side of your property.
So, are there calculations that show that? Where, like, where's the... So, how do we know that?
Um, through the chair? Through the chair?
Go ahead, Michael.
Um, I was just thinking, it might be best to let, um, Gloria have her three minutes, and then, um, have the applicant address the questions that the commission has afterwards, 'cause I, I feel like it's getting too much of into a, a back-and-forth conversation.
Oh, a story poll.
Um, yeah, I don't have a clock in front of me either, for how many, are we still at three minutes?
The clock was running. It's... If we, uh, close Michael's window, we could see the clock.
Okay. So, we'll just, uh, let Gloria speak.
Okay, Gloria, did you have anything else for us, Gloria?
Um, is it possible to get a story poll so that we can look at those, at, at the height and get a visual of where it would be?
Um, okay, we'll, we'll bring that up in our conversations afterwards. Is there anything else that you have?
Nope, that was it, yeah.
Okay, thank you for the comments, Gloria. Okay, we'll bring it back to Ken, or, uh, Mr. Ribera. Did you have any comments on that?
Uh, Rick, I'm, I'm, I'm pulling up my photographs of the site so I could get a better, better idea of, uh, of what, uh, what the neighbors seeing.
Okay. While you're doing that, do we have any other public comments?
No, Vice Chair, there are no other hands up.
Okay. Uh, then we're gonna go ahead and close public comment.
Through, through the chair.
Yes.
I have a, a question on this for staff, um, which is what issues we are allowed to regulate in relation to this. I'm, I'm aware that, um, I think California and state law, and I would, I would assume it applies here, has regulations on if, uh, you are shadowing solar power access. It's not clear to me whether, you know, shade landing in your yard is an issue that we regulate.
Uh, through the chair, um...
Michael?
So, yeah, the, the code and the residential design guidelines don't speak, speak specifically to protection of, uh, sunlight in, into rear yard. Um, that, we do have something called the daylight plane, which, uh, which is in the residential design guidelines, which this project meets. Um, but, uh, there is nothing that would say that an addition shall not, uh, shade an adjacent yard, because, um, I mean, this is an urban context, and so, um, any, any vertical element is going to cast some shade, which might touch another's adjacent rear yard.
Thank you, Michael. Um, while we're waiting for Mr. Ribera to come back with any comments, are there any other commissioners who have comments on this at this point? Anyone? Okay, I'm seeing a lot of no's here. Um...
Rick, Rick, I, I, I'm, I'm just gonna comment to say that, uh, fortunately for this design, uh, that, uh, the, the added height of the roof, again, is three to four feet taller than the existing roof, so, uh, whatever the neighbor is experiencing as far as shadows there, uh, would be minimal. Uh, and then, and then the two-story roof is just, is a, is another nine feet of setback. So, even if, even if there was, uh, in my experience, even if there was a daylight plane requirement, uh, a nine-foot, an additional nine-foot setback would, uh, you know, would, uh, mitigate that. So, uh, I, I, I can't, I don't want to get into any other discussion as far as, uh, leading, leading the neighbor to think that, uh, there won't be any impacts, uh, of, if there will be, you know, there, there will be a larger shadow, yes, but not, uh, uh, I can safely say that, uh, it won't be as if there was a full two-story house, uh, you know, within five feet of the property line.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Commissioner Harmon?
Can I also say, I, I believe that the segment of the house that's taller is, it's the north side, is that correct? And so, I mean, generally, we get southern sunlight, so that will help somewhat throughout the year.
Basically, the middle of the house, yeah.
Okay. All right, were there any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, we closed public comment, we're back to commissioner conversations. Anyone want to address this further or make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, the use permit, uh, for, for this one-two-three-six Cairns Avenue. Uh, uh, permit number twenty-dash-zero-zero-one, based on findings one-six, and conditions one-to-thirty-two.
Second.
Thank you, we have a mo- motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Staff, can you help us with that?
Yes. Uh, Vice Chair Biassoti?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
You're on mute.
You're muted, Commissioner.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
And Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Thank you all. Okay, the motion is approved, and there's a ten-day appeal period. And we'll move on to item B, which is five-fourteen Cypress Avenue, which is a request for a conditional use permit to construct nine-hundred-and-seventy-one square residential feet, uh, which will, uh, enlarge the house by more than fifty percent. Staff report, please. Hi, Rucha.
I think you might be muted, Rucha.
We're not hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I have been having some issues with my micro, my headphones, so, thank you for that. Um, good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Rucha Lende. I am, uh, planning staff, associate planner here. Uh, I will be presenting the second agenda item tonight, that is, five-fourteen Cypress Avenue, uh, use permit number eighteen-zero-two-eight. Uh, the request is for a conditional use permit to construct a nine-seventy-one-square-foot residential addition that would enlarge the existing house by more than fifty percent of the existing floor area. Uh, if approved, the house would be, uh, two-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet with the two, with two off-street parking spaces. Our staff recommends that the planning com- uh, commission approve use permit eighteen-zero-two-eight based on findings one-through-six and conditions of approval one-through-thirty-two. The subject lot measures five-thousand square feet, and it is currently improved with a single-family home, uh, with a one-car garage, and the subject property is located on Cypress Avenue between Park Avenue and Geneveen Avenue. Uh, the existing home measures one-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-eight square feet, uh, with two bedrooms, one bathroom, a family room, and a dining area. Uh, there are no easements on the property, uh, there were no previous additions on this property. There are no heritage trees on site, and the, and the project is categorically exempt per section one-five-three-zero-one-E existing facilities under CEQA. According to the San Bruno Municipal Code, all structures requiring a use permit shall also be first reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee, uh, which is part of the Planning Commission. So, the ARC reviewed this project on, uh, on its September tenth, twenty-twenty agenda, uh, at a public meeting. Uh, the discussion centered around, uh, the overall design of the project and also exploring opportunities to provide one more off-street parking space, um, in addition to the two already provided, uh, standard parking spaces. There were no public comments, uh, received, uh, on this item, uh, during the ARC meeting, and also as of, uh, any, as of preparation of the staff report for the Planning Commission. So, after reviewing the staff report during the ARC meeting, uh, the use, uh, the, the use permit was approved, uh, with a three-zero vote to the Planning Commission, uh, with the, with two recommendations. First one was to incorporate an additional parking space in the driveway, uh, so that, uh, the house caters to the needs of a five-bedroom home, uh, according to the, uh, ARC. And then, uh, another recommendation was to revise the, you know, previously submitted 3D renderings, uh, to match the proposed site plan. Uh, since the ARC, the applicant has, uh, submitted a revised design to address, uh, address the ARC recommendations, and one additional substandard parking space is provided next to, uh, to the, uh, to the standard parking space within the driveway. Uh, additionally, the 3D renderings, uh, have been revised and accurately reflect the proposed site plan. Similar to the previous project, uh, the conditional use permit requirement, um, allows the ARC and the Planning Commission to more closely evaluate the compatibility of larger additions such as this, which is more than fifty percent of the existing floor area, through the, uh, through the application of the San Bruno Residential Design Guidelines, and also through the San Bruno Municipal Code, uh, Development Regulations. So, this nine-seventy-one-square-foot addition would add three new bedrooms to the existing two-bedrooms, a bathroom suite, a remodeled kitchen, a family room... a bathroom suite, a remodeled kitchen, a family room, and a one-car garage. If approved and constructed, as I previously mentioned, this would incorporate a 1799 square feet living area with two off-street parking spaces and a 370-square, one-car garage. There is no second-story proposed or existing for this particular location. The proposed addition is located in the north, which is also the rear, and to the west, the right side of the existing house. And the neighboring properties to the east and west are all one-story and one-story single-family homes majorly. The immediate neighborhood is characterized by one- and two-story homes with a similar architectural style and exterior finishes. The proposed building would be consistent with the prevailing neighborhood scale as it does not add more volume to the existing building and will maintain the existing height of seven feet. Further, the proposed residential addition and remodel would make the front elevation more similar to other neighboring properties by bringing the garage closer to the street. The proposed project meets the parking requirement of two-car parking spaces according to the recently adopted parking ordinance. The proposed building would be finished in a new stone veneer skirting, fiber cement lap siding, and sunrise cedar asphalt shingle roof, which are predominant materials found in the neighborhood and to match the existing building exterior's materials. Staff finds overall that the proposed addition complies with all pertinent development standards and will maintain the overall neighborhood character style. Staff is supportive of the proposed addition based on the project analysis, the landscaping requirements, the development standards, and also per the findings summarized in the staff report. Staff supports the proposed project and its design and recommends the Planning Commission to approve this use permit based on findings 1 through 6 and conditions of approval 1 through 32, as it meets the findings as stipulated in the Residential Design Guidelines and the San Bruno's zoning ordinance. Lastly, neighborhood notices were sent out from 300 feet of the neighborhood and we have, staff has not received any public comments on this particular project. This concludes my staff presentation and I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions. After that, we can bring in the applicant to answer any of your specific design-related questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. So do we have any questions for staff at this point? Mr. Hamilton?
So, I was on the ARC for this one and I very much appreciate the revised drawings showing the parking in the front. There was a, we had quite a long discussion about the parking situation. Question for you, Richard. You know, clearly from the drawings, there's two cars in the driveway and then one in the garage. Is the fact that it's still being listed as two off-street parking spaces because there's only a single entrance from the street, a single wide curb cut? Is that what makes the second space not standard?
No, that is because the second parking space that is provided does not meet the dimensions of a standard parking space, which is 10 feet by 18 feet. What they are providing is eight feet by 18 feet, so they are short of.
Oh, it's not wide enough?
It's not wide enough, yes.
Okay, it seems, it's, from the drawings, it looks like you could almost squeeze in a third car in there, but I guess maybe are the drawings a little bit off, I'm not sure. Looking at page A0.1, there's a, there seems to be plenty of space to the south of the red car and.
Yeah, it might seem like that, but I actually measured it with my scale so they could, they can accommodate like one standard parking space and another substandard parking space.
Okay, okay. All right, that's fair. Part of the discussion that we, the spirited discussion we had during ARC is that it still meets the requirement even with five bedrooms, so I will rehash that one again. But I do appreciate the revised drawings to help us visualize it better because it was difficult in the ARC. Thank you.
Thank you.
You. Now, are there any more questions for staff at this point?
Oh, I was going to observe or ask, Richard. A standard parking space is sized for, I mean, up to something like a Ford Excursion, right? I mean, a standard parking space is quite large, depending on what type of car you might have.
Yes. But the code, yeah, but.
Okay. Was that the end of that? I'm sorry. Were you done?
Yeah, I mean, it's mostly an observation. The reason, I'm just observing, the reason that Commissioner Hamilton, you know, it looks large is that, I mean, a standard space is a very large amount of parking space.
Thank you.
Can accommodate different sizes of cars, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else with a question for staff at this point? No, I see a lot of heads shaking there. Okay, so we'll open up public comment at this point and we'll bring in the applicant or the architect. So can we bring in the?
The applicant has been brought in and there are no hands raised from the public.
Thank you very much.
The applicant's name is Alex and the owner is Vicky. So Alex, if you want to make a quick presentation, we would greatly appreciate.
Yeah, this is Alex, yeah, good evening, commissioners. I think Richard's report is really detailed and covered almost everything. I don't really have too much to say about the parking spot. Actually, the, I think maybe the thinking is a little bit different because typically if the code required two parking, we provide two parking, we don't necessarily want to provide more because some city, I mean, it probably is myself because some cities don't want you to put extra parking if they require two. If you put three, they hate it. I mean, for example, if I go to San Francisco, probably be going to say, well, we're going to cut the parking. But some city want more. For this side particularly, we could put two full parking there. If you look at the drawing, the one parked in front of the garage, we put in the middle of that garage, we can slightly move to the one side, we can easily put two car there for sure. I just measured and also I think, while the commissioners also mentioned that the car I put in the standard parking, that car can be easily like Chevrolet Suburban or some size like that. So, you know, for this side, you can definitely put three that size car there without problem. But just because the code says we only need two, so I didn't really want to put three full size there, but we can, and if you want, I can, you know, cover the drawing. Actually, I have on my drawing, I can easily show you this. The outline, the 10 by 20, I can easily move, copy another one over the smaller car, can fit there for sure. But I think that's pretty much I want to add and I don't know whether the owner is there. Because I cannot see whether the owner is here, but yeah, that's all. Yeah, I'm here, if you have any question regarding the design, I can, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here as well.
Commissioner Madden?
Yeah, thanks. That was the architect who just spoke?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Just one thing, I like the design. One thing I just wanted to point out as a, just a practical matter, is you have this flat roof with a skylight in the middle. It's basically a bathtub, all the water's gonna drain there and it doesn't look like there's a drain shown and in the space below it. You might have a small wall cavity where you could fit it in there, but I would just suggest that you take note of that and perhaps provide a backup overflow drain in case that main drain gets clogged with a flat roof like that. It could easily get overloaded and fail.
Yeah, thank you, I actually, I'm aware of that. Actually, last meeting, I think also some commissioner mentioned about that, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, it's a bit tough to tell in the rendering if you have some kind of cricket or trying to get it to come out the side or not, but I would just watch out for that.
Yeah, I probably will provide two high and low roof drain because I think even the code required that one higher, like two inches higher than the lower one to provide an extra drainage for that. But for that, yeah, like you mentioned, all four sides have the slope roof. It's hard to have extra, like typical gutter there to let the water drain. But we're going to provide the two roof drainage. One is a little bit higher, one is a lower. So when the lower one gets parked and then the high one, you can drain the water out.
Yeah, you may have to scoot that skylight upward on the plan just to give you some room to make a cricket there. It looks like it's pretty close to the southern roof, but. And then, of course, you'd have to have some kind of way to get it to the street through the crawl space. So just something to point out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Madden stole my question. I was gonna raise exactly the same thing, so thank you.
Great minds, great minds.
Commissioner Johnson, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanna, just for conversation on the parking, since it's only designated as two, I want to be sure that the applicant does not get dinged if he does have three, you know, sometimes code enforcement of some sort. It's probably not going to happen, but I want to be sure that 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 is not a penalty or something that comes up around. He indicated they can fit three cars and driving by that street is extremely, it's a tight, tight area for parking. So, you know, somewhere, I don't know what the proper terminology would be and I, from listening to one of the staff persons, Richard, he only did two because it wasn't in compliance. So how can we compromise on that? What can we, what language can be put in place? Or make a note of it of some sort. Potentially, three cars are eligible for parking.
So how our parking ordinance is written is that if cars are parked in the, in certain areas, then those are not allowed, like for instance, inoperable vehicle parked in the side yard. Or, so if the parked car does not trigger anything that the code, you know, does not allow, then, you know, I think they should be good with parking in the driveway. But if, which I think this is fine, but I don't, I don't see how we can mention that in the staff report or document it.
Well, I'd like to at least be known that the commissioner brought up the fact that we had discussed three parking that three cars are, can fit, at least some kind of documentation because these things come up way later. Since it is encouraged and it is designed and can comply, I'm not indicating that we should make an exception to the rule, but something so the applicant doesn't get penalized for adding parking and that's the one thing we're always trying to do is add parking. And the design is very attractive to be able to put cars in. And so it isn't as if you're parking on top of a lawn or jumping over a curb to make that happen. So I, I don't know what the, what the compromise would be, but there's, I think there should be some language in there or even just our comments.
I think the meeting minutes would suffice for that or we can also, I can talk with my supervisor or the director to see how we can document this.
Documentation is the key thing.
Yeah. I will make notes of that.
Through the chair, I would hope that if, you know, given everything that you said, Mr. Johnson, you're absolutely correct in terms of the tight parking in that neighborhood and our desire to always have more parking. Going back to the comment from the architect, we're one of those cities where we don't frown on extra parking. Just so you know. The, I would think that if, you know, and, you know, so Richard explained the, why it's listed as two and that makes perfect sense. It's listed as having two off-street parking, one in the garage and one in the driveway. But from a practical perspective, if they put an extra car in the driveway, as long as that car is not blocking the sidewalk, I cannot imagine anybody complaining about it.
I agree.
Okay. So we're still in public comment. Did the architect have anything else? Were you done with your?
No, I don't have extra, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, you do or you didn't?
I do not.
Okay, very good. Then we'll go ahead and, are there any hands raised from the public?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, then we will go ahead and close public comment and we'll bring it back to the commission for conversations, motions, or votes.
Through the chair. No further comments, we move that we, that the Planning Commission approve use permit 18-028 with the findings 1 through 6 and conditions of approval 1 through 32.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Staff, can we have a roll call vote please?
Yes, Vice Chair Biassoti?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
And Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
All right, thank you all. The motion is approved and there's a 10-day appeal period. Can we bring Commissioner, our chair, back into the meeting?
Yes.
I have to recuse myself at this point, I think. How will I know when it's time to come back in again?
We will let you back in when the item has been covered.
Okay, all right. Bye for now.
Bye for now, thank you.
May I ask what might be a silly question?
Yeah.
He's recused, but he's still allowed to watch and listen, correct?
Yes, he can watch and listen, but his face and his audio, he's just not allowed to participate at all or like interface with us at all.
Got it, okay, thanks.
And we will.
Through the chair, just for future reference, if you ever, if you ever have to be recused from something, you can speak during public comment as a resident, but you would come in just for that part, speak, and then out you go.
I suppose, yes, thank you. No, that's good to remember.
So Commissioner Harmon and Commissioner Morgan have been recused.
Okay. All right, thank you, Vice Chair Biassoti, for holding that down. We will go on to item 4C, which is a second amendment to the 1996 Development Agreement at 901 Cherry and 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill Drive. Can we have a staff report please?
Yes, indeed. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Kelly Beggs, Contract Senior Planner for the City of San Bruno and I'm pleased to present the item before you tonight involving a second amendment to the Development Agreement for the project at 901 Cherry and 1400-1450 Bay Hill Drive. I'll pause here just to note that the Planning Commission is required to review and make a recommendation to the City Council for development agreements and amendments to development agreements and that's pursuant to Resolution 1986-77. So I'll start by presenting the staff and consultant team who've been working on this, which includes Pamela Wu, City Attorney Mark Zaffarano, and Ed Schaefer, who is outside counsel representing the city in this matter, in addition to myself. The objective to tonight's meeting is to consider adopting a resolution recommending that the City Council approve the proposed second amendment to the existing Development Agreement for Bay Hill 8, which is the property at 1400-1450 Bay Hill Drive and 901 Cherry. I will start off with some background on this project. In 1996, the City of San Bruno and the GAP entered into a Development Agreement for Bay Hill 8 to develop the property at 901. to develop the property at nine oh one Cherry Avenue, which you can see marked as phase one here, as well as the properties with the address of fourteen hundred and fourteen fifty Bay Hill Drive marked as phase two in this parcel. The original project included the office building that's currently at nine oh one Cherry, located here, as well as the parking deck as part of phase one. And those were subsequently built as Gap Corporate Headquarters. The development agreement also included one additional office building and a parking garage at fourteen hundred and fourteen fifty Bay Hill Drive, the phase two site, and that is located to the west of nine oh one Cherry Avenue. As you can see from this aerial, the phase two site is currently vacant. Changes to that project, to the phase two project, necessitated the first amendment to the development agreement, which was approved in nineteen ninety-nine, along with an architectural review permit and a planned development permit amendment that authorized the phase two develop, the revised phase two development. The amended nineteen ninety-nine development agreement authorizes the construction of two new office buildings on this phase two site as opposed to the previous iteration of the development agreement, which only authorized one and a parking deck. Building two, located right here, is a one hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five square foot, three-story building, and that's located behind that existing parking structure. Building three is a one hundred and sixteen thousand square foot, two-story building at the western portion of the lot, located here, and this building does have a multi-story parking garage below those two stories of office development. The garage would be accessed from a new driveway that's located at the terminus of Bay Hill Drive. I will note that this first amendment to the development agreement did not involve any extension of the term, and it currently, the term currently expires on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Moving on to tonight's business, I will summarize the contents of the second amendment. So the primary contents of this amendment to the development agreement include, first, the extension of that expiration date and term of the DA. And that would be extended from February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, so that's about a six-month extension. Google's requesting the extension due in part to delays caused by the COVID-nineteen pandemic in addition to other factors. The first amendment that revised the phase two plan was approved in nineteen ninety-nine, but Google only bought the property in twenty nineteen and has been working steadily since then to develop the phase two project. The second amendment to the DA also outlines that in consideration of the expiration date extension and other items, Google has agreed to pay a total of four point five million dollars as a public benefit payment to the city's general fund, and that would be paid on or before February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Sorry, I still have one more, a few more items. The city art fee program is outlined in chapter three point four zero will apply to the project. Fees for soil nails, soil nails and tiebacks would also apply. The parking and loofah would also be applicable to the project as the project is located in a specific plan area. And then lastly, the second amendment will establish an alternative vested rights as part of the negotiated settlement. So the rights of the DA will vest when physical site work under the mass excavation and shoring permit have commenced, and at least thirty percent of the total soil volume specified in that permit has been excavated. And this differs slightly from a traditional vested rights, which vest substantial vertical construction. Moving on to environmental review for the project, as noted in the staff report, there have been two environmental documents prepared for this project. The first is the nineteen ninety-six EIR, which was prepared for that original project, and then an addendum to that EIR was prepared, which analyzed the revised phase two project, which is the same project being undertaken by the applicant and remains unchanged by the second amendment to the development agreement. As the project intensity and land uses have not been altered by the second amendment to the development agreement, the planning commission, commission is asked to recommend a finding that no significant or more severe impacts would be caused to require further environmental analysis. That finding is included in the planning commission resolution and the draft ordinance. Public notice was sent to a three-hundred-foot radius of the project site, and an advertisement was published in the San Mateo Daily Journal, and no projects, no public comments have been received by staff. This slide presents tonight's actions. I'm available to answer any questions that you have, along with the city attorney and outside counsel. The applicant is also in attendance and available to answer questions. Before we get to that, I will just summarize the next steps quickly. So next steps will include two city council meetings. The first council meeting, the council would receive planning commission's recommendations and also hold a public hearing to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance. The second meeting would include the second reading and adoption of the ordinance. After that, the ordinance would go into effect thirty days after the second reading. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Through the chair, if I have just one moment, I just want to make a note that we have accidentally noted the wrong agenda item. It's actually four C as opposed to four D, but there's no, there's no four D for tonight, just so you know. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for clarifying, and thank you, Kelly, for your report. At this point, does the commission have any clarifying questions for staff?
Through the chair?
Yes.
So regarding the environmental impact reports from nineteen ninety-six and nineteen ninety-nine, have there, have there been any significant changes to the requirements over the last twenty-four years? That would, you know, that, it, it seems odd to hold two standards that were from twenty-four years ago. I, I'm just not sure if, if, my question is, have the, have the standards been, been updated in that intervening time, and if so, would this project be subject to the newer standards, and has that been reviewed?
I'm going to direct that question to our outside counsel, Ed Schaefer, who I see has unmuted himself already in anticipation.
Good evening, commission members. The, the law states that when you have an adopted certified EIR, the question for any follow-on future approval for the project is, have there been any changes in circumstances, any changes to the project that would give rise to a potential significant impact that was not previously recognized and considered? Given that the, and the fact that regulations might change, unless they would give rise to a new significant impact, there is no need to do a further environmental study. This project is being confirmed for conformance with the nineteen ninety-nine approval, which was reviewed and approved under the SEQA requirements, and so there our determination is that no additional SEQA environmental review is required.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that had been checked. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have any questions for staff?
I do. It's Jared Madden.
Yes.
Yeah, so sorry, Kelly, would you be able to bring back up that, that site plan?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, and I apologize to everyone. I'm, I'm just trying to get up the speed on this project. Did you say that building three has multiple levels of underground parking?
Yes.
Do we know how many? Is it two or three?
So that's actually, they have to provide eight hundred and sixty-five parking spaces. Originally, I believe it was about five levels of underground parking to accommodate those, but given that we can now use mechanical lifts, they can actually reduce the number of levels and still provide the same number of parking stalls. So I believe what they're considering now is approximately three levels of underground parking.
Okay, and building two does not have any subgrade parking? They're, they're not like going underneath that building with the lot? Would it be completely within the footprint of building three?
Correct.
Okay, and then there's a central utility plant at the north, that, that's also a new structure to service the two new buildings? Or will it serve the entire campus?
I believe that that will serve the entire campus.
Okay, all right, thank you. And so going down that far, it's, it's going to be at least a thirty-six-foot deep excavation, which means we're going to have some very long soil nails. I saw there's a provision in there for that. The right-of-way that they would encroach, that's the, the dash Bay Hill Drive portion, is that, is that correct?
There's some encroachment here into easements and right-of-way that are held by the city.
Okay, and then what about the ones to the, to the left of the Caltrain, or Caltrans? I believe that's like an embankment.
Right, and that would be negotiated and approved with Caltrans.
Okay, all right, and then it, it said there's about forty-five hundred cubic yards of off-haul soil.
Associated with the rough grading permit, yes.
Right, so they would have to put in the, all the shoring, tiebacks or soil nails, and excavate up to thirty percent by August, correct?
Yes, thirty percent, but just to clarify, there will be more soil that will be excavated as part of the mass excavation permit, which is when they'll be, the rough grading is really leveling out the site and clearing shrubbery and other items. The mass excavation permit will be a more substantial soil quantity, and that's what the vesting rights is tied to.
Okay. Just a general question, has someone reviewed the traffic impacts that that's probably about five hundred truckloads of soil to remove that, which is going to take probably many months?
Right, that would, that was reviewed as part of the original environmental documentation. And as we've noted, they're actually reducing the, the depth of the excavation for that garage, so it would be within that environmental analysis or below what was summarized by that.
Okay, is the police department or the city engineers working with them to come up with a plan to minimize?
Yes.
You know, traffic impacts?
They will be required to specify haul routes as part of the review with Public Works.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, yeah, that's all I had. It just looks like there will be indeed some soil nails going into the right-of-way. And it sounds like there's provisions for that in the agreement, so, thank you.
Great. Do we have any other questions from the commission for staff?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I have another one. Commissioner Madden's question sparked a question, another question for me. The, talking about all those truckloads of soil coming out, it reminded me of the, the work that was done by the water department that where there was hundreds, probably even thousands of truckloads of soil that went down Crystal Springs Road. And that road needed to be repaved like three times during the course of that, of that project just because of all the abuse that the roads took because of the, of all that hauling. I would just like to make a recommendation that, that Public Works, you know, do an analysis when they come up with a route, do an, you know, do an analysis of the road condition. And if we're going to need to repave as a result, that that be part of the, that be part of the project and part of the responsibility of the developer to help us with that.
I know that that is a standard condition of approval that the city applies today generally, and we can definitely discuss with Public Works if they could make that a condition of the mass excavation permit.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, so if you have no further questions for staff, we can go ahead and open the public hearing. And do we have an applicant that's going to be presenting tonight?
Through the chair, I believe your applicants are allowed to speak. They are not proposing for any presentation, but they're here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So if they don't wish, then we can move on. Then I suppose, I suppose we should ask whether the commission has any specific questions for the applicant while they are here and available. I don't see any questions from our commission for the applicant. So in that case, we, within the public hearing, will ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak on the topic, and they can raise their hands. And Madeline can take a peek and see if there's anybody who'd like to speak.
We do have a hand raised. I'm going to bring Paul into the room.
Okay. Paul, we have a three-minute comment period, and we will take all public comments at once, and we'll bring them back to the commission when you're done.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
I just have a comment. I, I get all the agendas for all the meetings, and I just kind of pick and choose which kinds of ones I want to look at. And when I read item C, I mean, it's almost incomprehensible to the layman. And, you know, the meetings are supposed to be for the public, and if a person, you know, resident can't understand what you're talking about, I think we really need to make some kind of plain language document or addendum to these agendas so that the public has an idea of what these actually mean. I mean, that, that one sentence is, it's like seven or eight lines. It's, you know, I mean, I got a college education, and I barely understand what they're trying to talk about. The second thing is, excuse me, when I went to try to search these documents, they just keep coming back to the planning agenda, so there's no way for the public to really look and see what is going to be talked about. And it's just kind of a personal pet peeve that I have that, you know, it'd just be nice if it was, you know, a language that the average citizen could, could read and say, yeah, you know, I want to listen to this item because I'm interested in it or it's going to affect me. You know, if you look at it the way it's written now, it's like, I don't think hardly any residents in San Bruno could have an idea of what this even means. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other public comment?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I actually received an email during the course of the planning commission meeting, so I'll share my screen. And I will read the email, but you can all kind of see it with me as I am reading it. So this is the email that came to my attention. Can you see it? Is it too small? You're good. Okay. So this is from Alex Malendra, San Bruno Planning Commission. My name is Alex Malendra. I am a lifelong San Bruno resident, and I am also an organizer at the nonprofit Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. I would like to respectfully remind the planning commission that San Bruno is very behind on our existing Reno numbers. That increase office, increasing office space without a good plan to address, sorry, you're blocking my email, address additional housing exacerbates San Bruno's job housing imbalance and the human cost of this all. Displacement and a lack of living space creates pressure on low-income community members. Raising this much office increases the need of all levels of housing, both affordable and market rate. These companies employ people at all income levels. San Bruno doesn't have a single affordable housing proposal anywhere in the pipeline. Even in this extension, giving up several million, million dollars of the affordable housing fund doesn't, doesn't make good planning for homes. As a resident, I also find it strange that we chose to burden a recent residential development with larger fees with the pressure for housing is coming from all directions and charge a large commercial expansion with a cheaper discount when there is not a office space crisis. There's, this is not an attack on office, office space as people like jobs, but an observation of priorities. I ask the planning commission and city as a whole, consider additional ways to support more housing through commercial development. I suggest some of the planning innovations Redwood City has done, giving their commercial developers an opportunity to find land, directly apply their fees, and create more housing, in parentheses, sometimes through partnerships. It works so well, the staff can barely handle the pipeline. We need to be creative and flexible if we're going to be able to provide for more, more homes. Thank you for your opportunity to comment.
Great. Thank you, Pamela and Mr. Malendras. Madeline, is there anybody else that would like to comment?
There are no other hands up.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll go ahead and take those comments back to the commission. And you can go ahead and speak about those and any other questions that the commission has at this time.
Through the chair, I'd like to just comment on Mr. Melendres's email. He brings up some very good points about our need for housing in San Bruno. And I think the question of priorities is a good question as well. The, my understanding is that there's going to be an exploration of doing a housing overlay as part of the Bay Hill specific plan. So I'm hopeful that we will see some housing in this area as part of the overall plan for developing the campus. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Thank you. I was thinking the same exact thing. I know they're working on, I still think, the EIR, if I'm not mistaken, for the Bay Hill specific plan. But there is, I think, a potential of a housing overlay. So I think we're optimistic that we should see that blended in. And as far as the language in the staff report, I think, I mean, what I've learned in my few years of reviewing documents such as these is there is a learning curve, and the language is complex. And I think it's because a lot of the ideas that we're exploring are complex. And I've found that staff is a really good resource, especially the staff reports like are given tonight to a really good job. Staff has always done a really good job of breaking things down into more understandable chunks. So even if sometimes the materials that are in front of you are confusing, you always have access to see staff. If you can email or call to have any clarification. But I think as far as the writing and the reports, I think that they kind of necessitate a certain degree of complexity and unusual language that the average person's not super familiar with. Is there any more discussion that we'd like to have within the Commission about this matter? Or are we prepared to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion if there's no more comment. I want to make sure there's no more comment.
It seems we have no more comment.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to recommend that the City Council approve the proposed Second Amendment to the existing Development Agreement for Bay Hill 8.
Okay, is there a second?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. I think that we will need a roll call vote.
Okay. Chair Lethan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassodi?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Madden?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. The motion has passed, and I believe this will then be forwarded to City Council. Thank you. So let's see here, what do we have next? So I guess technically I have to bring, I have to bring our public hearing to a close. This is the end of public hearing. And then we will move on to number five items from staff.
Through the chair?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, what have I done?
Missed our exiled members?
Yes, so we're bringing them back in.
Bring our buddies back, thank you. Sorry, I go by my outline, and I forgot to bring that back.
There are no virtual pit in the ground with bars on the top.
Okay, Chair, we are ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back, everybody. I think it takes a little minute for them to pop up, but hopefully they're back with us. So Items from Staff is next on the agenda. Let's see, Pamela, I think that you wanted to enlist volunteers for the Architectural Review Committee?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Can I have any volunteers for the November Architectural Review Committee?
I'm available.
What was the date again? Sorry.
I got three members, but the date is November 12th. So it's the date after a veteran's date. So I have Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Madden, and Commissioner Johnson as a volunteer. And I'll put Commissioner Harmon as a backup.
Yeah, I'm available as an alternate.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Pamela. So now we can have a second public comment session. And if there are any more members of the public who would like to speak on anything that was not on tonight's agenda, this is your opportunity to do so. Madeline, I'm wondering if there's anybody in?
There is no one with their hands up.
Okay, thank you for checking. Well, in that case, the next Planning Commission meeting will be...
Through the chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the important part that I miss every time, and that is reports and Commission news.
The Items from Members, yes. I would like to observe that our Planning Director, Darcy Smith, is leaving to take a new job in Millbrae. And I wanted to, I guess, make a motion that the Commission express our appreciation of her service to the city and congratulate Planning Director Wu on taking over that role, at least on an acting basis.
I second that. And I'll third that motion.
Seems like something we can do by a claim.
Give your hand there. Thank you, Pamela.
Through the chair, if I may. Thank you for the wonderful words. I will pass it on to Darcy. Last Friday was actually her last day. So I officially began my new adventure as the acting role yesterday. It's been two long days, but I think I'll pull through. Thank you. Thank you for the kind words.
Congratulations, Pamela. I know I really always appreciate the time you take in some of our offline conversations going over some of these details.
Thank you.
I have a comment to make. I think this is probably already known, but since we have a new member. And I find that when I read the report and if there's anything there that might need clarification or attention, I bring it to the staff in advance of the meeting, so it just saves time. And also, some things are pretty small, so it's better not to have to deal with little things when we have such big things to do. So it's just a small tip, that's all.
That's good advice.
Through the chair, I'd like to echo the comments that Chair Lethan made at the beginning of the meeting to welcome Commissioner Madden to our ranks. Thank you for volunteering your time to the city. And we appreciate you joining us. We look forward to collaborating with you.
Absolutely.
All right. Anybody else have anything they'd like to share before we move to adjournment? All right. In that case, the next Planning Commission meeting will be held on November 17th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. And again, it's yet to be decided what the format of the meeting will be. I suspect we'll still be here, but keep your eye on the website. And details will become available as we learn. The time is 8:35 PM, and we are now adjourned. Good night and thank you.
Night, everyone. Bye.